Okay, it's two o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, April 11th, 2019. It is 2:00 PM. We do have a forum. All members of the Board are present. We're in the Aleene Strang Community Room of the DOST Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas. And we're here to consider and act on the posted agenda. The first item on the agenda is call to order, which I've done. The next item would be invocation. I'll ask Mr. Baker to do that, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow with me. Lord, we're very thankful for this busy season, this important time in our college's history. Please protect our students, allow them to finish strong this semester. We thank you again for our Board. Please be with them as they deliberate for the good of this institution. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand up and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Second item on the agenda is open forum.
We have none.
We have none? Thank you, ma'am. Item three is President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. I would like to begin by recognizing Dean Duane Duratt. Dean Duratt, would you please stand to be recognized? Last Friday evening, Dean Duratt assembled a group of musicians to perform "It's All About the Music" at the Alkec Fine Arts Center. The show was dedicated to the 2018 Weatherford Citizen of the Year, the late Raymond George. Good is the enemy of great. When I asked Mr. Duratt to become Dean of Fine Arts, I challenged him to take our arts programs to the next level. And let me tell you, he responded. I have never seen at any venue or institution such an exceptional gathering of musicians in one place. Several audience members were literally brought to tears by the exceptionalism of the performances. Please join me in recognizing Dean Duratt and all of the exceptional musicians who performed with a round of applause. Congratulations to the W.C. Agriculture Students who recently won a wide range of awards at the Texas Junior College Agriculture Association Sweepstakes Contest. Instructors Vance Christie and Melinda Myers did an outstanding job supporting our students. Congratulations are in order for John Vandergriff for being selected as the 2019 Alumni's of the Year, and to Dr. Marley Harris, excuse me, Molly Harris and Keith Loftus for being honored with distinguished alumni awards. This morning, 388 Weatherford High School juniors and seniors toured Weatherford College. Recognition is in order for Adam Finley, Kay Landrum, and the many volunteers that led tours around our beautiful campus. We will undoubtedly enroll many future coyotes as a result of their efforts. And last but not least, I would like to recognize Weatherford College Farm Hand, Mo Hedrick. Mo recently won Best Actor for Short Film, and his movie, "Moon Crossing," won Best Western Film at the Sunnyside Up Film Festival in Ardmore, Oklahoma. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. It is with respectful remorse that I acknowledge the passing of our nursing instructor, Edna Garza Escobedo, and the resulting termination of her Employment Effective 3/25/2019. And I acknowledge the retirement of Humanities Instructor Jackie O'Neil, whose last day of employment will be May 11th, 2019. We thank Jackie for her service and wish her the very best in future endeavors. And we are also very appreciative of Edna's service and wish her family the very best during this difficult time. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Are there any comments or questions about any of that? Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. That's A through F, and they're listed there. It's been posted. Are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda before I ask for a motion? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports?
I meant the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I take it that's unanimous. Fifth item on the agenda, Consideration Possible Action Cultural Enrichment Transfer. Dr. Cantrell.
For those of you that didn't realize this was going on, we transfer money toward athletic usage from our tuition fees. This has been done since the early '70s, and I'm sure it was when athletics was adopted, and toward student activities. And we did, we have in the past transferred for a newspaper, or we switched it over to the annual for journalism purposes. It's come to our attention that we no longer have newspapers and annual. And with the attention that we've now focused with our fine arts program that we're having our strategic under Dr. Farmer's leadership, there's been an emphasis placed on strategic realignment and renewed emphasis on cultural enrichment. And so thinking this through, we thought it was a wise idea that we might recommend to you all that we take that 15 cents per semester hour and transfer it toward the fine arts programs of students and the community, that those funds would be placed for things that normal instructional areas didn't cover. And so we're recommending at this time that the Board of Trustees approve the cultural enrichment transfer rate of 15 cents per semester credit hour to auxiliary funds, replacing the previous newspaper annual transfer rate of 15 cents per credit hour that is no longer needed. This action would be effective for the 2018-19 year. That would enable us to go ahead and utilize those funds this summer in whatever, Mr. Duratt, thinks should be, such as Steinway pianos and things like that. Questions? Yes.
Does it have to go just towards fine arts? Can we not look at maybe the agricultural programs or diversifying it to more technical programs as well?
Doesn't have to go anywhere.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we just thought that would be a good thing. Many things like that's in the culture for the community that is not straight instructional, tied to instruction here at the college that would require it to do, that we might have to reach out and touch the community to put money into. So we thought that this would be a good way to transfer those funds toward that. That's not saying we can't do anything else or other fees toward the other programs if necessary.
I'd kind of like to see more diversification.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How much is diverted to athletics?
Right now, it's $8.15 or so.
And compared to the 15 cents that we're talking about?
Right, absolutely. And in order to pay for that, we had to request that that be increased.
And how is agriculture funded?
It's right now, it's funded through the instructional area. And student, they have a student club that they raise funds for and do things.
So they're kind of on their own, basically?
In the past, they have been.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just add, Raymond George and I worked together on the restoration of the Mount Pleasant School. And we also have, I believe Raymond told me, at one time, either the first or the second oldest CME church located on Oak Street. And if we're talking about culturally, you know, I think this would possibly fit in as well, as far as, I will, you know, Raymond told me that they had grades from first grade to eighth grade.
First.
And two teachers, two rooms. And they, so I would hope that we could make young people today understand what education used to be like, especially if you were a minority, because it was hard.
Thank you. I think that's a great comment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Perhaps we could table this item until we had time to examine it a little more closely and look at exactly how much funding goes to various student organizations. Basically, we discovered that since our yearbook and newspaper are no longer functional, that there's some money that can be reallocated, and we certainly want to reallocate that in a fair and proportionate way. What was immediately addressed was that there was a significant amount of money going to certain areas and very little going to the other areas, and we want to rectify that in a fair and equitable manner. So perhaps we can come with more detailed information about exactly what kind of money is going to each place, and then have a more in-depth discussion to make sure that we move forward in a fair way.
Doesn't the, doesn't the 15 cents per semester credit hour go to the auxiliary fund? Isn't it just?
That's what's been happening to it.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm mistaken.
All right, we transfer it.
And so there would be a more definite breakdown onto the different funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
And who would make that decision? Would your, would there be a special committee do that, or would you do, who does that?
Well, what we would do is bring recommendations to the Board. You have the authority to approve the budget. And this allocation is currently and has been historically dedicated to the yearbook and the newspaper, which, as we've mentioned, are no longer. So there's money on the table that we can reallocate. And the question is, what is the most equitable way to reallocate those funds? And so that's something that we can do a little more study on and bring back some recommendations for your consideration and possible action.
I would just like to ask that the consideration of these programs be based on long-term effects of students, their students' future, not what these activities do for students on average out into the future.
Well, this is a good problem. This is one of those problems where we have resources that we now can bring to bear on many, many areas that are in great need. So with consent of the Board, we could table this action and bring it back with a little more detail for your consideration.
I just take that we don't have a yearbook anymore. We haven't had a yearbook.
Do we need a motion on a table?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Is there a motion to table this item?
I certainly.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's table. Thank you. Sixth item is reports. First one would be demand study update. Mr. Indy.
Thank you. Just following up with our monthly man study. This month, we're continuing with our Industry Opportunity Survey process, which is both a written survey and face-to-face meetings, and Janette Cruz and her staff are continuing with that. They'd like you to know that our new barber program, which we initiate this year, filled to its 15 capacity on the first day of registration, and they've added three seats, which are also filled. So the barber program is filled for its first enrollment over capacity.
Where will that be? Is it in the over in Mineral Wells?
In Mineral Wells. We're also pleased to let you know that the engineering program with Tarleton is on schedule to be offered in the fall 2019. I spoke with Dean Martin yesterday, and that's in process. We're scheduling the time period. It'll be an afternoon class, probably on Tuesday or Thursday, our Engineering 1201. And in the area of robotics and coding, we are hosting a May robotics training for young people, pre-college age students. There'll be a coding training during that contest, and it's the beginning of our discussion of doing coding, perhaps as a summer class through continuing education at our Weatherford College Wise County Campus. Our high school interest survey went out early last week. That interest survey, we're just beginning to get data back on that survey, and Mr. Buckle will speak about that in a moment. We also wanted to point out to you that as we look at effective use of resources, we have for several years, I believe it's four years, paid our instructors in the workforce education area in dual credit. That was new to us about four years ago. We do that at some expense to the institution. In your last board meeting, we wanted to point out to you that we approved a $10 per credit hour fee for workforce education. While we regret that we'll have to charge students a fee to take workforce education courses, this fee is relatively nominal when compared to the students who are taking general education courses at the normal tuition rate of approximately $85 per credit hour. They'll be paying $10 per hour, but this will help us to offset the cost of faculty, and we'll be notifying all of our secondary education partners of that in the next week. We're just making sure that you're aware of it. And Lee, you're just beginning to get data back, I believe, on the high school interest survey. Could you update the Board on the information we have?
Certainly. We're currently at 241 complete responses on the interest survey. Our top two respondents to date are Springtown High School and Weatherford High School. The interests are, interesting, what we have are the majority of students intending to transfer straight into a four-year institution. And the second category are the students who plan to come here for an associate or to get credit hours then transfer. And there's one response here that I have to point out. This young person kind of steals my heart because their intent after high school is to travel and get their life together. I wouldn't have that.
I don't want to die.
What we also have is the majority of students are intending to achieve a bachelor's degree at some point in their academic career. However, this close second is a master's degree. I think acknowledging kind of being increase in qualification demand that the market is kind of putting on us. Institutions of transfer. The top institution that they seek to transfer to is Tarleton University, followed closely by Texas A&amp;M University. However, in the other category, the top response was, and I have to do this, Baylor University, my alma mater. Maybe it has something to do with Lady Bear's performance in the Final Four, I don't know, but, you know, I don't have the data to say anything conclusive about that. So, other than that, we get into the different programs of interest, and because of the number of programs that we're listing here, we have a lot of different choices, and no one comes out as the clear winner. Though whenever we look at, I forgot to mention the degrees, there was a significant number of students who said that they intend to achieve a medical doctorate. So there were 20 respondents who intended to go on to medical school. Wish them luck. Other than that, I think that is a pretty comprehensive look at what we've got to date. And as we close the survey on April 26th, we'll be able to come back with you with a more comprehensive analysis, with some breakdowns by various areas, and let you know what our possible students are intending to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you refresh my memory? How are the high schools distributing this information to the students? Is it the counselors?
The counselors. Yes, and we contacted the counselors with the million, and they're distributing it to the students. Students click on the link, fill out the survey, submit.
I wonder if it would help us at all to maybe send an email to the superintendents to encourage their students to fill this out so that, because we're doing it for them so we can be better prepared for what they want, and the more they give us, the better we're going to be in providing what they need.
Certainly, and it's good practice in survey research to kind of send a reminder, and we can send it both to the counselors and the superintendents if that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, I know there's, I fully understand the response won't be what we would expect, but the more we can give, the better we can give them what they want.
Yeah. Well, the nice thing about collecting data is it tends to rest towards the mean, so the more we give, the more accurate representation of the collective data.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Lee.
Yes, sir.
Would you please follow up with that young person who's going to get his life together or her life together, and see if they can share some of that with us?
Well, unfortunately, we don't know who said that.
Oh, okay.
It's certainly a misstatement.
It's a lofty ambition. I'm still working on it.
That's over for you.
All right. Dr. Cantrell, Guided Pathways.
Okay.
Thank you.
We continue to work with Guided Pathways. We will be attending, the 14 members will be attending the April 24th through the 26th Guided Pathway session. This theme of the upcoming institute is ensuring students are learning, and I think that's one thing that Dr. Marlette talks about all the time. How do we know that they're learning? It's the fourth dimension of the Guided Pathways model. Topics covered will relate to the following essential practices. Program learning outcomes, we're making sure that they are aligned with the requirements for success. We're making sure that students have ample opportunity to apply and deepen their knowledge and skills through projects, internships, co-ops, clinical placements, and group projects outside of class. We're making sure that faculty programs assess whether students are mastering their learning outcomes and building skills across each program in both arts and sciences and career technical programs. We're also making sure that results of learning outcomes assessments are used to improve teaching and learning through program review, professional development, and other intentional campus efforts. We're also making sure that essential practice that the college helps students document their learning internship for employers and universities throughout their portfolios and other means beyond transcripts, that they have something in hand when they go to get a job, that decides a transcript shows that they're capable. And also that the college assess effectiveness of educational practice and uses that, with those results to create targeted professional development. Hopefully, next time, we'll bring more information back to you, we'll be more knowledgeable for going, and we look forward to it. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Mr. Finley, Partnership with Wesleyan Foundation, if you're up.
In October 2017, Mr. Baker recognized multiple employees for their efforts in creating a program with assisted students who are in need of food and other basic items. It was at this point Weatherford College officially sponsored the Coyote Closet, a food pantry to serve students who are experiencing food insecurities. A designated space within the academic building was made available, which was formerly a supply closet. And with assistance from student clubs, employees, and community involvement, donations filled the closet quickly, so much so, an additional closet for overflow was designated. Administrative issues soon rose as the college addressed best practices in inventory, dealing with excess donated items, distribution methods, and hours of operations. However, this February, Dr. Ferris approached my office and individuals closely associated with the Coyote Closet regarding a potential partnership. Their proposal to relocate donated items and oversight of the Coyote Closet to the Wesleyan Foundation. After a few brief discussions, it was clear a partnership with the Wesleyan Foundation was the next best step for the Coyote Closet. Just prior to spring break, through the efforts of several volunteers from the We Care Club and the Police Academy Cadets, the Coyote Closet officially moved to the Wesleyan Foundation. There are many benefits to this partnership, both to our students and the Coyote Closet, but also to the college and the Wesleyan Foundation. Students utilizing the Coyote Pantry will have greater access in a more private setting, while students volunteering through clubs and organizations will still have the same opportunities to serve cultivating social and civic responsibility. The Coyote Closet space has expanded and has room to grow. The college recoups storage space, however, most importantly, faculty and staff continue to have the opportunity to assist and direct students to this resource. And the Wesleyan Foundation benefits from repurposing space and fulfilling their mission by meeting students where they are. While this report has not focused on numbers, these changes in access, established hours of operation, additional volunteers to serve students, and increased volume of space are real numbers with heart. These changes are meaningful for the few students served in this capacity, and this service has and will continue to have a meaningful impact on student success. Lastly, I would like to formally thank Dr. Ferris and the Wesleyan Foundation Board. Weatherford College is grateful for this partnership and thankful for their dedication to our students. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Mr. Indy, Vet Tech Program Update.
Yes, sir. I believe you have a copy of a timeline as well. Teresa's passing right now. Let me give it to you. What you're getting is a copy of the timeline of events that have taken place thus far. I mean, us working toward establishing a start date for our Vet Tech program. The graph page is a list of items that need to be completed in order for us to open the program. I've tried to thin down the events to only the most critical issues that we've encountered. So what you're looking at on, that would be the second page for you on the timeline. You see that we started on May 22nd, 2017, with the first real formal notification that we wanted to start this program. We met with the city shortly thereafter. We began the process of running the proposed program through the cabinet and then bringing it to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees approving the program in October of 2018. You note that we sought approval of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and we've received that approval. In December, we notified the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools of our intent to begin this program. We will hear back from them after their July meeting of 2019. We have a timeline for applications to the American Veterinary Medical Association, and an understanding of when we must hire our Vet Tech Program Director, as well as the Vet Tech required to start the program relative to the starting date and the enrollment of And you notice that there has been a lot of activity in the last few days as we've worked with the city to discuss instructional technologies that we will desire for this program. Notice that our General Counsel, Mr. Curly, and I have been working on the interlocal agreement from the institution's perspective, and that will be shared with city representatives to make sure that we have a contract that we can actually uphold and that will be used to support a program that will not only open, but will remain open and vital in the community and do what it is we projected, which is a unique program that we'll be providing in our area. Unique not only in our region, but in the state and in the nation. This partnership will be truly unique and a model. And we are working through, if you look at the graph, you see that that page has a number of items that remain to be done. They're broken down into areas of activity, the first being the interlocal agreement and a memorandum of understanding, the contract. The second being areas of curriculum that need to be resolved, and that'll be largely between Dr. Welsh, Dr. Garofalo, Dr. UAM, myself. We'll bring those forward as we need to, to Dr. Atkins and to our crediting bodies. And you'll see that there is IT. We realize now that we have more than just radiology equipment and sonography equipment. In order for us to provide the kind of program we ought to provide here, the surgical suite and the activities in that area need to be available on video. They need to be on live playback outside of that room. Obviously, we're not going to put 18 students in a room where someone can conduct surgery. So we need to be able to put that into other facilities that are nearby. We need to be able to record it in the event that there's a surgery that's performed after hours, and we want those students to see what that looks like. And that equipment is now being specced by Mr. Schrader, and with the help of Mr. Desmond Deal, who's here from the city. And we'll be bringing back the costs of those forward as we arrive at them. So that's a major step along the way. And then- And then we have the issue of budgeting and start dates to work out with you. Other questions?
Are there other community colleges doing this that are close to us that we can look at their curriculum or ask them what they did that didn't work?
There are other community colleges doing Vet Tech. The one that's been established the longest, I believe, is Cedar Valley. Is that correct? Cedar Valley. And they've been in operation since, for as long as I can remember. Cedar Valley is a Dallas County Community College district. Collin College is beginning a program. Collin is obviously north and east of us, and a significantly different institution. There is a program like this in Waco at McLennan College. Tarrant County College has requested permission to start a program, but nothing in the literature that I've seen says that this program is in development for offering for the fall of 2019. Once you get permission from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, you have basically two years to begin the program, and then you resubmit in case there's a change. So I don't see that happening. And Mr. Grisar, in addition to the fact that there are other colleges doing this, what we need to consider is that they are not working with a working animal shelter. So what they're doing is having a veterinarian with a clinic that's in-house, and they're bringing animals in, and they're working with animals that are provided them. We would be working with a working animal shelter that will be seeing not only cats and dogs, but horses and snakes and birds and whatever else they'll be dealing with. And they'll be dealing with animals that won't necessarily be the best cared-for animals, because that's the nature of our shelter. So they'll be seeing some things that wouldn't normally occur in the clinical environment of a veterinary technical program, even though there may be other colleges that offer them. When I say it will be unique, that partnership is what will make it unique.
I think it's great, and thank you, City of Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Indy.
Thank you.
Future agenda items or meetings? Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next month, we will be bringing you our preliminary budget report. Already budget season. That's all for item seven, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, announcements?
Yes, sir. It is a very busy time. You noticed on your list of upcoming events, I'll hit a couple of highlights for you. We have a beautiful concert here tonight, Dr. Song, and a special appearance from a concert violinist, Swan Lynn, will be here tonight, 7:30. It'll be a wonderful concert. Tomorrow is our alumni awards luncheon. As President Farmer mentioned earlier, we'd love to have you here for that. That will be in Texas Hall tomorrow instead of this building. Earth Day, April the 22nd, have several events that day out in front of the academic building and the Kramer Flag Plaza. Mozart's Requiem, a production from our choir and also the Parker County Community Choir, will be April the 23rd in the Ockec Center. Our spring jazz concert is the 26th. Our first ever international piano competition will be April the 27th from 9:00 to 6:00. Dr. Song has 32 entrants, from, a lot of them from across the United States, that will be there that day. We're excited to announce that we are going to have a fireworks show celebrating our sesquicentennial. Our Coyote Baseball Booster Club has partnered with the foundation, and we have three great sponsors that are paying for the lion's share of that, and that'll be April the 27th after the doubleheader at Williams Ball Park. The doubleheader will actually start at 2:00. That's changed now since 1:00. It'll be a 2:00 start, and then after the two games, we'll have fireworks there that night. It's going to be great. We're also very pleased that our regional softball tournament, which has been in McKinney for several years, will be here at Stewart Field. And so we'll have six softball teams here fighting it out for the right to go to the national tournament in St. George, Utah, and hopefully, it's the Coyotes. And then, of course, commencement, May the 11th. We have two ceremonies that day, and we would love to have you there in the Durant Auditorium.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure. Please.
I wanted to do two thank yous. Yesterday, Dr. Farmer did an outstanding presentation at the East Parker Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with Charlton, and he just, he represented this college so magnificently is an understatement, but he did a really good job. And then, second of all, I really want to thank the group that's working with the Vet Tech program that is very near and dear to my heart, and, and I know we're pushing an uphill battle, but I promise you, we will push hard. I promise you that. And I thank y'all very, very much for your efforts, and we will push.
Thank you, Mrs. McEnell. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Closed session is number nine on the agenda. Consult with the college attorney about the different, three different areas of the government code as posted. So at this time, we will close the open session and begin the closed session in about two minutes. Thank you. All right. The time is now 3:32, and we're going back into our open session, and we'll move to agenda item number 10, consideration, possible action concerning real property. And just briefly, this is going to deal with a motion to authorize the president's emergency authority, Dr. Farmer's emergency authority, to take actions necessary to deal with, with facility infrastructure replacement or repair, and we won't get specific into that since it has to do with facilities on campus. So my, my motion would be simply that, authorize president, the president to exercise his emergency authority as authorized under, under our rules of operation as a facility, as a, as a college. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number 11, consideration, possible action. There's no action to be taken under 11. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that? We'll move to number 12, and is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Wow, that was amazing.